I am so excited that you all are here this evening. My name is Donna Butler and I am the Department Director for a newly created department called Recovery and Resiliency. And it was formed for the sole purpose of administering $328.9 million for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funds. So if you're not here for the Disaster Recovery Meeting, you're in the wrong place. But if you are, then we're going to go through a real brief presentation and then open it up for your comment on what you think about our plan. So as you know, we're coming up on a year of when Hurricane Ian hit our community. And shortly thereafter Hurricane Nicole, but these funds are only for Hurricane Ian. In December of 2022, Congress appropriated $3 billion for storms throughout the entire country for disasters, not just hurricanes, but fires and other things. And then in May of 2023 HUD released a Federal Register Notice that allocated to Volusia County the $328.9 million for recovery from Hurricane Ian. So if you've been on our website, I apologize because some of this is going to be repetitive for you. But I think it's important for those that haven't heard it to understand what CDBGDR is. If you're familiar with local governments and the funding that we get from the federal government, this is similar, but it is different. So this comes from HUD. The federal government appropriates this funding for disaster recovery needs. And it's to help for needs that are not met by other funding. It addresses unmet need, it's for long-term recovery, and it also focuses on mitigation. Things that we can do to make ourselves more resilient to prevent some of the damage that we saw this time. So that includes infrastructure planning, housing, a variety of different things. So $328.9 million again, 286 of that is an allocation for the unmet needs, which we're going to talk about a little bit. And then 42.9, a minimum of 42.9 has to be spent on mitigation. So funding requirements, 15% of the CDBR, CDBG, I've known that a long time and I get twisted on it. CDBGDR has to be used for mitigation at a minimum. We're very lucky here in Volusia County, oftentimes when the Federal Register says, hey, you're going to get money, but it's only going to be for this specific community within your county or these specific counties within the state. Volusia County is very lucky, our entire community, our entire county is a MID. MID stands for Most Impacted and Distressed Areas. So we're very blessed that we can spend this money throughout the entire county. We have six years to spend the funds, but that's six years to not just spend it, but then also report on it. So we really only have about five because it's going to take us quite some time to do all of the reporting that HUD requires us to do. So we've got this great timeline here. If you've been on our website, you've seen this before. And you see the nice little arrow there which points to where we are. So I've talked about some of these things. We've been busy. We had a community engagement series. We had six community meetings. They were almost all of them very well attended. And then we began writing an action plan. And that action plan is what we're here to discuss tonight. We brought a consultant in to help us to look at our data that was collected by our disaster consultant. And then we put together a plan. It's very lengthy. If you haven't seen it, it is on our website. I have a hard copy here as well. So we have to post that for 30 days. That's a federal government requirement to allow you all, the public, to make comment and tell us what you think. Did we do a good job? Should we do something differently? If you have questions, let's see if we can answer your questions. The questions that will work hard to answer for you tonight are going to be focused on this action plan. If you have a question that's not related to that, I will try to answer it, but I may not be able to because what we're really focused on here tonight is this action plan. So once this is done, the 30 days, which will end September 5th, I believe, is the last day. We will then forward this on to our county council for their review and approval. Hopefully the first meeting in October. Once that's done, we send it to HUD. And they have 60 to 90 days to let us know whether they think we've done a good job with our plan. Once that happens, they'll send us a contract and hopefully we can really start making some transformational work happen in our 386 area code. So in order to do that action plan development, we did an unmet needs assessment. And that was to look at, we looked at the data acquired that we received from FEMA, SBA, public meetings. And then we talked about already the public hearing, which is tonight. The budget requirements, we can spend up to 5% for administration. We can spend up to 15% for planning costs. But as you'll see at the end of this presentation, we're not suggesting we're going to spend all of that on planning costs. At least 15% for mitigation and the remaining percentage will go for the unmet needs that are identified. So what's an eligible use of funds? I have gotten some comments, some folks saying, hey, can you come to my high-rise condominium on the beach and repair my condominium? Unfortunately, I cannot do that. I can't fix the seawalls. I can't bring dirt in. But what I can do is address an unmet need where no other funding source is available. It has to meet a HUD national objective and it can have a direct or indirect tieback to Hurricane Ian. So what's a HUD national objective? Here are three. It has to benefit low to moderate income individuals. And that's something that some folks have a hard time with, but this is what these funds are for. It has to alternately meet a need having a particular urgency or urgent need. And finally, it can aid in the prevention or elimination of slum and blight. So when we talk about low to moderate income, these are the, we're talking about what we call 50% to 80% of AMI, which stands for Area Median Income. And so if you're a family of three, you can earn no more than $55,750 in order to qualify for this program. So and obviously if you have more than six, there's extrapolates out. These are the income limits that are provided to us by HUD. They are not something that we make up. HUD gives them to us. So at least 70% of the funds must be used to benefit low to moderate income. Does that mean, oh wow, 30% can be used on the wealthy? No, it does not. We would still have to, let me go back. If we were looking at an area, if you look to this benefit to low to moderate income, if we look at an area, it still has to benefit at least 50.35% of the residents have to be LMI persons. So it's tricky. Everybody's going to have to apply individually for housing assistance. And then it gets even trickier when we talk about the infrastructure for local governments, but we'll keep moving. Publication of benefits, this is something when we went through training on this that they told us over and over again is one of the biggest things that HUD will come down and monitor on us. We have to make sure that we've looked at all the funding that an individual family or a local government or nonprofit has received on a project, whether it's person's home, whether it's a city project. So we're going to look at private insurance, FEMA, SBA, private loans. And after all of that has been looked at, CDBGDR fills the gap or the unmet need. What is remaining that has to be funded in order for a project to move forward? If you are someone that has paid for repairs and document, repairs for your home already, please make sure you're keeping receipts in case you qualify for reimbursement. So unmet needs is this analysis. I've kind of talked a little bit about it, but again, recovery needs minus the available resources to cover the needs equals our unmet needs. All right, same concept with our mitigation. So there's four program areas that we can place our activities under. Housing, which can be housing rehabilitation or repair. Reimbursements for disaster-related new single or multifamily affordable housing construction. Home buyouts in high flood risk areas, and that is willing owner only. Homeownership assistance and legal services and housing counseling. Infrastructure, all kinds of different facility improvements, reconstruction, repair of damaged public facilities, bridges, water treatment. And then it can also be a non-federal match for other federal grant needed programs. We, in Volusia, well, throughout the state of Florida, there's the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And there's a local government match requirement. These funds can help local governments get their projects funded. Economic revitalization, there's a whole host of things there. We have really focused in on the job training program, which I'll tell you a little bit more about in our budget section. Mitigation, again, we talked about this before, activities that improve the resiliency of an area, infrastructure, home or facility. So unmet needs. So this is our housing component first. And I can go through all of it, but I'm actually going to start at the bottom and then work my way back up again. The total CDBGDR unmet housing need, housing need is $661 million. How much did we get? 328 million. We didn't even come close to being able to have enough money just for our housing with the allocation we got. When we got 328, we were like, wow, that's so much money. And we hadn't done our unmet needs assessment yet. If you've gone online, look at the unmet needs assessment in our action plan. It's laid out really clearly and you'll see all the data that works together for this. So there were 64,000 plus housing registrants under FEMA. 35,000 were owners, 26,000 were renters. The homeowner housing unmet need was 370 million. Recently, the county has put out on to the street rehabilitation projects for low-income housing. And we've seen anywhere from a 25 to 30% markup from the time we do an estimate with a contractor to when it's bid out. So they built in a 25% market increase. Rental housing unmet need, the housing unmet need. Rental housing unmet need, the housing mitigation grant program, housing unmet need, Public Housing Authority unmet need, all of these are quite substantial. And then 15% for mitigation on top of those things. And that is in case we need to raise a home. If we actually have to demolish a home and reconstruct it, it must be built three feet higher than the 100-year flood plain. So that is going to be an expensive proposition if we have to do that. So that's why that 15% for mitigation is in there. So again, 661 million just in housing needs that are unmet. And when I say unmet housing needs, that doesn't mean damage. That doesn't mean damage. Remember, we did, we talked about the duplication of benefit and what's left at the end is the unmet need. So this is after FEMA monies, after insurance monies, then there's the unmet need, the gap that was out there. So 661 million is the gap. Infrastructure needs. This is largely just based on the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program that the cities all submitted to our Emergency Operations Center and so forth. But this is wastewater improvements, transportation improvements, flood control. There are other infrastructure projects that we have heard that the cities wish to apply for, and they will have an application process to go through this coming fall. We did a survey. We got over 800 responses. We're excited about that. 90% came from concerned citizens. Project rankings, the number one was actually mitigation at 39%. Housing was close second, though, with 31%, with the biggest focus on that of rehabilitation. So here's the budget. This is the bottom line for the action plan. This is how, based on the data that we received, based on the unmet needs assessment, this is how we suggest that we would spend these funds. 5% for administration, which is the cap that HUD provides. Keep in mind, planning was allowed to be 15%. I really thought that was a little high, so we brought it down to 5.6%. This is largely going to be for infrastructure projects. We are going to be partnering with our cities. And if they have not had engineering work done in order to build a road or to reconstruct stormwater or build stormwater, this, these dollars would pay that on their behalf so that they could get that engineering work done before we put it out on the street. Housing. So this is 60.8%. Real quickly. So when we did all of the unmet need, I probably should have put this in the presentation when I was relooking today because someone had sent me a comment saying this was too much money that we had allocated towards this. But when we looked at all of the unmet need, the 661 million represented 82.2% of all of the unmet need, which totaled $804 million, almost $805 million. Infrastructure was 12.6%. So I felt reasonably sure that we are pretty close. We're never going to get all the housing money we need, but 60% versus 82%. Of that, 145 million is suggested for the repair and replacement for single-family homes. So if we go in to your home and you had flooding, you'll have a damage assessment person come in, they'll look at your home, figure out what needs to be done, they'll write a scope, and then we'll move forward. If repairs to a home exceed 50% of the value of that home, we have to replace the home. That is a HUD guideline. So that's 145 million. 5 million is for rental repair. There is a cap of $50,000 per unit that we will provide to a maximum of eight units for a landlord. But those landlords have to rent those properties for 20 years to clients that meet affordable housing guidelines. So they have to be affordable housing units. And then the new multifamily construction, this will assist our public housing authorities. I know we have at least one public housing authority here tonight. And with reconstruction, but also new construction. On an average of $50,000 contribution, that's a lot of units. That's 1,000 new units in our community, which if you have, know of anybody that is struggling to find a place to live, it's a huge need. We were 12,000 units in the hole before the storm. 12,000 units. Affordable Housing Initiative did research with the Schimberg Institute, and we are 12,000 units in the hole. So this is going to really help us. The single-family repair and replacement is going to help us keep our affordable housing affordable. If we do not fix this housing, it will go into disrepair and folks will either become homeless, have to move in with family, and we will have derelict buildings that will have to be cleaned up. So it's a great opportunity to really make sure that we're keeping our affordable housing affordable and then constructing some new. Infrastructure and mitigation really go hand in hand. So 15% is, 15.2% is about $50 million. And then the mitigation requirements, that's almost $93 million for infrastructure in our community. And that's really going to be leveraged against what the cities and nonprofits will bring to the table because it's not fully funding a project. And then public services. One of the things that is very important to HUD is the Section 3 program. And it's a requirement that we encourage the hiring of low to moderate income individuals to work on these projects. Well, I just talked about the fact we're going to have $200 million worth of construction going on in our community over the next five years. We already have a shortage of folks in the trades. We are going to work hard to develop a trade referral program. So do some job training, but then also refer to the contractors that are out there. And while we cannot require that they hire them, we can definitely require that they take the referrals and encourage them to hire wherever possible. So that makes up the $328,910,000. And now we'll take public comment. So if you have not filled out a yellow public comment card, we'd appreciate if you would do so. I will call your name. And if you will come up to one of these two mics here, and I can either, if you want to read your card, and if I call your name and you've written something down and you do not want to read it yourself, you want me to read it, I'm happy to do that. And then I will do my best to either respond, tell you that I can definitely give you an answer, tell you I might have to get back to you, or do the best that we can to respond. Okay? All right. So up first is John Gamble, followed by Hardy Smith.
I'm going to take a little different approach than some of the rest of the people here.
Hang on one second. Doesn't sound like his mic is on.
Is that better?
A little closer, John. Stand closer.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Hang on one second. She just got up and reminded me of something. So two things. There is a QR code above my head there or over here. If you are in the audience here and would like to submit something in writing, you can click on that QR code. Can you go back to, oh, and on the, but you can also go to transform386@volusia.org and submit an email that way. It will come up and we will be able to respond to it. Also, if you're watching virtually, you have that opportunity to do that as well. And we will try and read your email into the record if it's relevant to the action plan. If it's not relevant, if it's a personal question, we won't be reading it. But these ladies over here are watching for us and we'll do our best to answer. So I apologize, John, go ahead.
Okay. In 2006, the county shot the whole county with a light on. And what that is, that's a laser bouncing off the surface. Before 2006, the best topographic information we had was five-foot contour from the USGS. And now we have one-foot contours, but it hasn't been updated since 2006. We've had a lot of development in the county. And that's some of the data they used to study for 100-year flood plain designation. And there's a lot of places in the county that have never been studied. Okay? So my big concern is when we put new housing out there or we rebuild or elevate existing housing, and they say, oh, three feet above 100-foot flood elevation. Well, what if that's a crappy elevation because no one has studied it? And it's just in there. The rate maps, the insurance rate maps, aren't really that good. They're not really tech. We've had some areas that have been studied and other areas that have not. So to me, the mitigation, that's, that's really base data. I would, I would spend money to update and reshoot the county and figure out the areas where you're going to want to do a lot of work and see if they've all been studied. If they haven't been studied, get the engineers going and have them study those so that we're really using good base data. I mean, and that's to me, and not only is that important for this project, but all the cities want to keep the new housing above. And I don't care whether you're out in Margaritaville or wherever you are, if you don't have good flood elevation out there, the next thing we know, the next big storm that hits, oh, we've got new houses underwater. And we've seen it before. So I would suggest that, that even if you can't spend this money for it, sometimes the feds put a lot of restrictions on it. You have a huge job to do, and I know how complicated it is. But that's worth taking the council to get them to fund that if you can't figure out some other way to do it. When we did it before, it was entirely done by the stormwater and by the general fund in the county. It was not done. We couldn't get any cities to partner with us. St. John's would not partner with us, DOT. Now, when we got done collecting all the information, we put it on DVDs out in the libraries. And who raced in the first couple of weeks but St. John's and DOT? So, and it's, it's really, and it's really helpful to development because it, it has all the really detailed elevation they need for development and things like that. So it saves the public a huge amount of money on all kinds of stuff. So, but anyways, that, that's one of the things that, and we've, we've, we've done a lot of, the county's done some elevations through emergency management. And through stormwater, we've done some where we've bought houses. And, and it seems like that's an expensive thing, but in some cases, like we bought, I think 12 between Ormond Beach and Holly Hill, just, just a little bit west of the golf course. And there's a big pond there.
Thank you, John.
But for years, we spent, spent millions trying to fix the flooding problem. Okay? When it's real low, unless you're going to build a New Orleans-type setup, which you don't ever want to get into, buy the house.
Great. Thanks, John.
So thank you.
Yep, you're a minute over.
Okay.
Okay. Up next is Hardy Smith, and then we have the folks from Habitat for Humanity, Jack and Kay.
Thank you very much, Hardy Smith, City of Daytona Beach. The Daytona Beach community was hit extremely hard, much suffering because of Hurricane Ian. And many of our residents, hundreds of our, thousands of our residents and businesses are in fact still suffering from the damage this terrible storm caused. The city would like to thank the county and share our appreciation for the bending over backwards assistance we're receiving from county staff. We certainly appreciate that. And the partnership that the county has opened the door to, the invitation to, to the cities across the county for participating in this opportunity to be considered for use of disaster relief funds. These funds, from a Daytona Beach standpoint, would certainly be used to help alleviate the suffering that continues and also to help mitigate against future storm situations, which we know will happen. And we appreciate this opportunity. We do, we will be submitting for infrastructure projects. And again, we appreciate the cooperation from the county in this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hardy. I believe I said it earlier, but the county plans to partner with the cities. If our infrastructure projects aren't handled the exact way that HUD wants, we're on the hook for the funds. So we've offered to handle all the administration work with them so that they get the projects they want and we ensure that it's done exactly the way HUD wants. All right. Kay Walker and Jack, I think you were going to speak together?
Good evening. My name is Kay Walker, as we, as she told you. I am founding member of the Habitat for Humanity in Southeast Volusia. We have built over 150 homes in Southeast Volusia. But that's not, that's not why we're here. We have a program that is called Critical Home Repair that Jack and Ralph have been doing for years. And we need help. We've got veterans that are, we've got community, folks in the community are just hurting from the, not only from the storms, but just because they are just hurting because they can afford. I'd like for you to hear about this Critical Home Repair program that we've had going on forever and realize that we do need the help.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. You want to tilt that up just a little bit?
Okay.
There we go.
There we go. Good afternoon. My name is Jack Travis, and I'm here representing Southeast Volusia Habitat for Humanity, where I serve as a member of the board. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for being here. I'd like to thank you for organizing this. That must have been a horrible task, but I appreciate it. Thank you. My purpose for speaking is to share with you that in addition to building homes, including multifamily homes, we, we have a program that, it, it helps existing homes and we'll, we'll come in and we'll put up grab buyers, we'll do whatever somebody needs to keep your home safe. And during this time, during this flood time, we have just been inundated with requests for help. We, we have responded to 30 homes over the last year, which we, we've done things like replaced soap, drywall, cabinets and floors, and anything that needed to be done. We were there to help. Our chairboard, Kay Walker, is here. And we respectfully request that a meaningful allocation of these funds be earmarked specifically to Southeast Volusia Habitat for Humanity so we can continue this, this effort that we're doing now. Not all Habitat affiliates do this Critical Home Repair. We're one of the few that do, and we're very proud of our cultural commitment to helping others such as the aged, disabled veterans and the poor and needy in our county. On behalf of our executive director, Mark Billings, who serves as a member of the Volusia County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, we sincerely hope that you'd consider our request.
Sure. How about we sit down and talk?
We'd love to. I'll give the information to Mark.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Bill O'Connor, followed by Teresa Pope. I'm sorry? Okay, is the engineer going to speak? Did you fill out a card? So Teresa, you are up.
Come up to your mic. Hello, Donna.
Hello, Teresa.
Yes. Okay. I have my developer with me from Smith &amp; Enzi.
Good evening. Jake Zunnaman.
Are you going to speak, sir, as well? Okay, so when you're done, fill out a form for us.
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sorry. I want first to thank you at Volusia County for putting this together. I know how hard it is to do this tedious work. FEMA is going to be researching our current flood zones. So one of the things that we might want to consider is how that flood zone change may affect the funding in the next five years and how that works. I don't know their timeline for getting this done. And if it's going to cause a problem, you know... you know, with the timelines. We lost 40 units of public housing with four foot of water, and the city of New Smyrna Beach requires stem walls to raise every building that's going to be reconstructed there. We will have to destroy the properties or relocate, we relocated all the tenants and got them in decent, safe and sanitary housing across the state of Florida. And, you know, we have experience in developing affordable housing. We have been recognized by the HUD field office in Jacksonville for the way that we handled our disaster and our relocations of our tenants.
All right. And I'm Jake Zunnaman with Smith &amp; Henze Affordable Group. We represent about 20 housing authorities across the state and the country. I think what Volusia County has done thus far has been incredible in terms of supporting our efforts on West Side Phase One, which is 80 units for seniors. And right now, we're planning to submit to Florida housing for 9% credits from the state to develop another 72 units of housing for families. Right now, there are two properties, 40 units each, to be demolished and redeveloped. And just want to thank the county so much for the commitments they've made thus far. And basically, just talk about a few of the problems that we have in our industry, specifically rising construction costs that continue to grow each and every year, and all the different utility improvements and other water sewer roadway improvements that we'll be doing with these new developments. Insurance costs, we've been underwriting insurance for quite some time at, you know, three, four, five, $1,000 a unit. Now, we're seeing in the $200 to $2,500 a unit. It's pretty crazy expenses. And I'm sure something that everybody in this room can relate to, just rising interest costs of our, our permanent financing. So just really want to thank the county so much for all the effort they've made thus far in supporting our ability to bring 72 units and hope that some of this money can be allocated to create even more and get above that 80-unit threshold we're trying to replace, all the way up to 96. So county's been a fantastic partner. We hope that continues. And I'm just really looking forward to this, you know, maybe once in a, who knows how many time, opportunity to access funds for new housing for families. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. You can, thank you both. All right. Next, I have Robert Reinhegen. Apologize if I didn't say that right, followed by Donna Paschiuda. Could I say it right? Oh, great. Thanks. Robert.
Hello. At the last Port Orange City Council meeting, a number of residents of the Sleepy Hollow Development complained about the continuous flooding in their neighborhood. During comments, one of the council members mentioned that this older development had no wetlands and no retention ponds, and that would not have been permitted under the current land development code requirements. It seems to me that part of the resolution of their flooding problem would be to buy out some of the homes and create retention ponds and wetlands. If you elevate a home, you subsidize that one homeowner to remain in their home. But you do little to mitigate the potential for flooding of the other residents in the neighborhood. If you buy out a home and create a retention pond, you reduce the potential for flooding the neighbors, as well as helping that homeowner get out of the flood zone. But Port Orange has only offered its affected homeowners a voluntary elevation program. Because, I'm lost. They have not offered buyouts. And I think that's a real dereliction on their part. I recommend that the county give funding priority to buyouts over elevation because buyouts provide a greater return for the taxpayers' funds. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So Donna Paschiuda, followed by Wendy Anderson.
Hi there. My name is Donna Paschiuda. I live in New Smyrna Beach. I live in Pine Island. I had moved in March before the storm. When the storm came, I, myself who's 60, and my dad and husband, that are both in their 80s, 87, the storm started coming and everybody said, you know, stay in your house, stay in your house. And I was a little bit concerned about my family. And I'm like, okay, what am I going to do? And then you just start seeing the water coming up. And within, I'd say, maybe it was 24 hours, all of a sudden, as fast as that water came up, that water went down. It's as if somebody pulled a plug. We heard the neighbors, it's about 144 homes in Pine Island over there, and our entire community has a canal around it. I have been looking up a few things where it said in May that Pine Island and one of the other communities across from us was granted over a million dollars to get our canal dredged. My question on that was, when is this dredging going to happen? Is it going to happen after we have the next two or three hurricanes that come? Or are we going to do it now? Supposedly, we've already been allocated the money. So when is that going to be done?
Do you know who is supposed to be doing that dredging?
I can look it up on some of the articles that I was reading.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to express was, me as a homeowner, living in New Smyrna Beach with two elderly people and trying to take care of them, you listen to the media, you listen to the news, and one thing that had happened to us, I was listening to the radio, and it says, you know, if, if you've been flooded and you're looking for a place to live, why don't you call some of the assisted living places? They have a lot of empty apartments or rooms or whatever where you guys can stay and everything else. Okay. I tried that. I was ready to start calling the mayor because I went to four different places, and the cheapest we got was $6,000, $7,000, $10,000, and $12,000. Now, when there's an emergency going on and people are looking for places to live, this is ridiculous. One of them says to me, yeah, you can sign the contract with us, but we're going to need to know all the medicine you guys are taking. I'm like, wait a minute. Why are you going to give us our medicine? All I want to do is have a lock and key that we can have someplace to eat and live and survive. So anyway, it cost me, I took out of my own money because FEMA didn't give us anything for at least four or five months. It cost me $10,000 to stay at two Airbnbs for two months, $4,500 for one Airbnb, and $4,500 for another. And then on top of that, what happened was, the insurance company says, oh, well, we'll pay for you to stay somewhere, $20,000. And FEMA says, well, we don't let it, we don't pay for anybody to stay anywhere. So it was a conflict of interest where I laid all that money out myself, and I think maybe I should be part of that group there to maybe get some of our funds back on that. I've used my retirement savings to put ourselves up. I know a lot of the people in our neighborhood, I got trailers, but my dad and husband could not live in a trailer. I could not get them up those steps. We could not live in a little space like that. We needed two bedrooms and a bathroom. We needed handicap facilities. And nobody was out there helping us. Thank you. I just wanted to express what happened.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
All right. So Wendy Anderson, and next after that is John Peters.
Good evening, Donna. Thank you so much for everything you've been doing the last several months to kind of pull all this together. You know what I want to talk about. So, okay, I want to just kind of point out some of the language that's in here, particularly starting with the infrastructure unmet need. We do have language that says that watershed management systems are part of what's included in that. And, and certainly, as we anticipate future disaster events, and we want to design, you know, systems that can withstand those emergencies. In the mitigation-only strategies, there is a reference to the multi-jurisdictional local mitigation strategy. That's a, that's a 2020 document that was put together. And I spent some time going through that. But anyway, in, in your report, it says Volusia County may use CDBGDR funds in order to fund projects that align with the activities identified in the plan, and all activities will reduce or eliminate the long-term risk to human life and property hazards. So then if we go into that LMS plan, also known as the Mitigation Action Plan, there are two categories that I think are kind of worth noting. One is prevention, and included in prevention are strategies such as open space preservation and updating floodplain regulations and doing more maintenance of drainage systems. Somebody just mentioned canals. Floodplain regulations, I also want to reach back to John Campbell, who said it's time to update the, the LiDAR elevation maps. Absolutely, yes, that. But another category in the LMS is natural resource protection. So that's, you know, protecting green spaces for floodplain protection, watershed management, riparian buffers, et cetera, et cetera, wetland preservation and restoration. So when, when I've spoken with you before at some of our gatherings around the county, you know, I, I was trying to bring this up, that we need to protect some green spaces within cities. And, you know, as Robert just said, you know, maybe buy out some houses to create green spaces within neighborhoods, but there are undeveloped green spaces. And I know that sometimes infill is, you know, it's kind of the, you know, the, the thing we really like to see, like, oh, infill's better than sprawl. But we need some of these green spaces inside of our urban zones to hold that stormwater back. Because if we fill them, it's just going to push that stormwater out into our most vulnerable communities, as we've seen happen time and time again. So if it's possible to use some of the $42.9 million in mitigation to look for green spaces that are in strategic locations, that protecting them would prevent flooding of hundreds of homes, I think that's something we need to do.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. All right. John Peters, and then Keith Chester.
Yes, John Peters. I'm the Engineering Services Director for the City of Orange City. I'm also here with Vice Mayor O'Connor and Dale Aronson, our city managers. I first want to thank Volusia County for making this effort. In Orange City, we have a very unique situation. We do not have an outfall in the entire city. We are a series of 80 different basins, but three of them are most critical, and that is on Graves, Mill Lake, and Industrial. Mill Lake and Industrial are within the low moderate income area. Traditionally, over years, people tend to move in the floodplain area because that's what they can afford. And that's what's happened with us. We have been developing a strategy as to what best to mitigate the flooding situation. The one outfall that we have in the city is a 12-inch stormwater force main owned by the DOT for the low area on 1792 near Mill Lake that discharges to the St. John's River. That pipe is and has not been maintained. It is in a situation where we are extremely concerned that at some point it's going to fail. Murphy being an optimist, it will fail during a storm. So what we have trying to do is, we have developed a plan to install a new pipe. Recently, there was a study done by the West Volusia Water Supply Group on a borrow pit out by Blue Springs. It has adequate capacity to handle the stormwater in the Mill Lake area. So we'd like to purchase that property, fix it, do treatment, so we can get St. John's permit. And then we would also like to upgrade the pump station. In the industrial, there's a joining piece of property that's available that we could expand our stormwater capacity. But we do have to pump the water from the industrial drive area up to that particular area. So those are the projects that we want to pursue so that we can minimize the impact of flooding in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next is Keith Chester, and followed by Dorothy Dixon.
I like what the last three speakers said the most is where we can mitigate for the masses as opposed to dealing with single-family homes. I think we need to concentrate the funds on the masses as much as possible with mitigation efforts. And also, the open spaces that we purchase or obtain for the purpose of mitigation can also be used for recreational purposes. So there's dual purposes, and having green spaces in neighborhoods is always a good thing, especially if the county owns it, maintains it, and it has a secondary purpose. The second reason that I'm very concerned about using funds to build or to work on individual housing is, when we got the ARPA funds, a lot of people also know it as COVID funds, county staff went and asked for those funds to be utilized to do a backlog of repairs on homes. I always was under the impression that those repairs were just that, repairs. You have a low-income family or a low-income individual, and they need a roof done, the roof is leaking, and that creates a problem for them, and they can't afford it. And those, that's what I had felt the funds were for. But what's surfaced as of recently, it's more of a whole remodel. There's about 15 homes that we're going to be doing whole remodels on. And I'm not talking about cheap remodels. I'm talking about everything from flooring to new appliances. And I think that was, it's a terrible waste. And I'm very concerned with these funds that we have now. It's like another pot of free money, and that we're going to waste them instead of using on big projects for the masses that will have lasting effect. I'll just give you a couple of examples. The first round, there was 4 million set aside to use on homes of that COVID funding. I'll call it COVID funding. People understand that a little better. And one of the homes, one of the first homes I have here on my list, it was requested that $271,000 be spent to repair a home that has a Zillow, Zillow is an estimating company. It's $271,000 being spent on a house worth an estimated $159,000. Here, we got $294,000 being requested to be spent on a house worth $250,000. We have another one, $294,000 being requested to be spent on a home worth $145,000. And then I go down a little further in the list. Now, this is what was just requested and the council put on hold. And there's a house worth $447,000 that they've requested to spend nearly $100,000 on. This home's got a beautiful swimming pool behind it. And this is supposed to be repairs for a low-income person. I don't know who low-income has a beautiful pool and a beautiful home. When my friend got in trouble behind on his taxes and everything else, what we did, his house had more value. We sold it. I helped him, got it sold, got taxes paid, got the repairs done, then went and bought him something very small, a lot smaller. I'm very worried about the waste that's going to occur. And I know on these homes, there was only single bidders on this last round on most of the homes. If that's the case, and we're just going to throw money away, what is going to happen now that you have this new big pot of money that's probably going to have five, 10 times the number of homes? Let's concentrate on the masses. Let's mitigate. Let's do what's right for the entire community to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dorothy Dixon, followed by Jerry Nolan. Okay. If you want, we can chat after. And I'll see what I can do. Not my department, but I'll see what I can do for you. All right. Jerry Nolan, followed by Carol Guzbi. And if you have not filled out a form and wish to speak, please do so. These are the last two.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Nolan. I live here in Deland, about two blocks from here. And I've read the draft document and read the original authorization through HUD. And as you're moving forward, as staff is moving this forward, I can see that within the housing component of Transform 386 and the county's intentions, we have allocated the up to 50 million in funds to be used for the classification as low and moderate income housing. Correct? Is that correct?
It's actually 200 million, 50 million of which is for multifamily. It's actually $200 million, $50 million of which is for multifamily.
Multifamily. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So if a... An entity would like to help in coming up with, proposing a solution, it can be both for-profit and not-for-profits that are the entity proposing the solution. Is that a correct statement?
For the multifamily housing?
Yes.
Yes. We'll put NOFA's out on the street, which are Notice of Funding Availability sometime next year. We're going to try and work as much as possible with community assistance in the monies that they already receive and the programs that they partner with the state on and through their federal funds, so we can really try and leverage and maximize these funds. So for-profit and nonprofit developers can apply for the development of the multifamily housing dollars.
And as you responded to that, and I'm grateful for the input, this helps me in better understanding what's happening here. You used the term leverage, and I think I saw that in the draft document. Seems to be a very, very popular word, and I would think a smart proposer would want to access that. Is the applicant the developer, profit or not-for-profit? Or is the applicant a city where that development resides or would sit within?
It's the developer.
It's the developer. So the developer could propose something in any one of the municipalities in the county directly to the county to access those funds? So the application is made to county for those funds, or the application is made through the cities to go to get the funds? No, to the county direct?
So the multifamily housing will come directly to the county for us to review applications in a competitive format.
Beautiful.
They will compete at numerous times for...
And they will be setting the parameters for that in the coming weeks, months?
We're using the same parameters that we just used previously with the same dollar amounts per unit. So $35,000 per unit for a regular multifamily housing unit, $60,000 for a public housing authority-associated unit, and, did I get that right? And then $75,000 for a permanent supportive housing unit. Now, the cities don't apply, but successful applications have cities as their partnerships.
Beautiful. Thank you very much.
And the implementation, but just coming to the table, either with funding, land, whatever the case might be.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. Do we have, did I see another one collected? Carol Guzbi? Is there anybody else that had wanted to speak? Carol.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name is Carol Guzbi. Forty-eight years, almost here in the city of Deland, 32 years, retired from Volusia County Transportation, drove all around this city. The community is in my heart. I work, I have a home. I used to live there, but I still own the home in the Spring Hill community, and I understand that some of these funds are, you know, also will go, are supposed to go into the Spring Hill community. Just would like to see some more work done there. And my heart is in housing, and I know we talked about the housing and the different, you know, amounts of monies, the unmet bills and everything, but we are in need, very in need, of housing and affordable housing. We have so many young, single parents with mothers, children, that may be working a job, two jobs, three jobs, and still cannot afford some of this rent. So something desperately needs to be done to help in that area or to even build more affordable apartments. I know affordable homes, I know they say we go by your income, and some of them do, but we need something that these people can afford. The Section 8 program, the list is so long, you can hardly get in there. And then also the homeless. We have so many people homeless. We need shelters, more than what we have here, especially in Deland. We need shelters for these people. You know, I know we have a lot going on, monies are being infiltrated through all different types of areas and places, but we also need to focus on the very need of people and what they need. Need to work with that. And especially, let's bring some of that money into the Spring Hill community. Now, hearing a little bit there, let's put some money in there, and let's add up as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Did you want to hand me your card?
My name is Chad Walton. I'm the CEO and founder of a company called Snap Space Solutions. Sometimes people wonder, "Well, what's going on within communities as far as public dollars being spent and everything?" As a private company, we're working hard with the city of Daytona, with, I had a meeting yesterday with Ormond Beach. We're meeting with quite a few different communities around to address the affordable housing. We've spent pretty much this entire year beating up floor plans, beating up ideas, beating up materials and everything to get the housing down to where it's very affordable. We built, my company builds homes out of shipping containers. They're, as hurricane-proof and tornado-proof as you can possibly get, we've also come up with a design and a way to elevate them at a fraction the cost that it costs to elevate a traditional house. And we can also install them, you know, in a day or two versus the months it takes to build on-site. So as a private company, we are working hard, and we're pinching pennies as much as possible because the more that we can help Deland and Daytona and Port Orange and, you know, all the cities around, it helps their dollars go further and it helps take care of the extreme need for housing. So I just, I want people to know that there are some of these private companies that are, we're working hard, long hours to try to do that, to help the community, so.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Last call for the yellow card. Anybody else? All right. Then that actually concludes our public meeting. I so appreciate you being here. If you have more information you want to share, if you think of something later that concerns you and you want to ask a question, transform386.org is our email address. Okay? So you can send us an email, and we will do our best to respond to you. If you're asking about the application process for homeowners, that will start later this fall, as soon as we can get ourselves going. All right. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.